All right, everybody, let's begin by calling the meeting to order at 7:05. And I'll go ahead and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd remind everybody that if you're not talking, to go ahead and hit your mute button, please. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Provazano.
Here.
Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Yeah.
And Rich Bentley is here. All present accounted for.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Approval of the minutes from April 30th, 2020. You received those electronically, I believe, from Becky Kavanaugh. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman. If there's no additions, deletions, or corrections, I make a motion, we approve the June 30th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Mr. Shudo has made the motion for approval.
Second.
Mr. Provazano, second.
Mr. Bentley has a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
And I apologize for not seeing this earlier, but under B, special land use, RC1 racing, the first paragraph that starts with Dave Shuto seems to be a duplication of what is under 6A.
Okay. So there's no error, other than it's just a duplication. There's just an additional copy of a paragraph. Then I think we could go ahead and continue with the motion. Mr. Shudo and Mr. Provazano seconded. Mr. Bentley, go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Provazano. Mr. Provazano. Member Provazano.
Aye.
Mr. Shudo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Question on the motion, is this amended minutes or the minutes as presented?
It can be amended if we need to have it amended.
If we're incorporating Mr. Bentley's removal of the duplicates, if that's part of the motion, Mr. Shudo, my vote would be aye.
It is, Mr. Tuckfield.
All right, thank you for the clarification, sorry about that. Aye.
Chairman Hardy.
Aye.
Yes. Member Oliver.
Yes.
And Secretary Bentley, aye.
The amended minutes have passed. Thank you very much. On to new business, preliminary plan, Char Estates Site Condominium, permanent parcel 0816100015, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, west of Card Road, Section 16, McComb 24 Development LLC petitioner. Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you mentioned, Char Estates is located south of 24 Mile between Card and Romeo Plank. The property, just 10 acres, owned R1 residential, posing a 30 lot site condo that would potentially connect to some future developments such as Wellington Estates and Harmony Acres, as you see on the plans that you were given. You see this on your agenda twice tonight, the preliminary plan and the final plan. This one we're addressing right now, the preliminary plan. So this preliminary plan was approved back in 2017, and it expired without them moving forward with a final plan. So they have resubmitted an identical preliminary plan for our approval. And that being said, all internal departments have recommended approval for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Our Nate?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Provazano.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I don't know, I apologize if I'm wrong, but do we need to approve the agenda? I know we approved the minutes. I just don't want any procedural flaws.
Thank you very much, sir. You caught my error here. All right, Mr. Box, we'll hold off for just a minute, and we'll go ahead and prove tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion?
If there's nothing further, your honor, listen to me, Mr. Chair. It's my court problem. I would ask that we approve the agenda.
Support by Tuckfield.
Mr. Provazano made the motion to support the agenda. Mr. Tuckfield supported it. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Provazano.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Shuto.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Box, you don't need to repeat everything you said. So basically, this was something that was done in 2017. It expired, and they resubmitted, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Yes, Phil Ruggeri here, as the petitioner and owner of the property.
Okay, Phil, please state your name and address for the record.
Phil Ruggeri, R-U-G-G-E-R-I, 43231 Shaner, Sterling Heights, 48313. I'm the owner and the petitioner of this development.
Okay. Mr. Ruggeri, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, all the departments had okayed the preliminary site plan, and we're prepared to start developing the site this year. It's all geared up for August. I appreciate all your consideration in this matter.
Okay, sir, thank you. I'll take it to the commissioners. Have any comments from commissioners, comments or questions?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
This question would be to Mr. Box with regards to this. Mr. Box, I know I had some questions on this from several residents with regards to preliminary versus final plan, and why it could be done in the same night. I did some answering, but could you summarize your understanding of it to make sure that we have that clear? I know some of the people who asked me are in attendance tonight, and I just like to make sure that was clarified for anyone who had questions.
Sure, so essentially, they can both be on the agenda as long as they have followed the proper procedures to get to this point. Under normal circumstances, I don't think we would see a preliminary plan and a final plan on the same agenda, because you guys would be discussing at depth preliminary plan. However, given the fact that this one had been previously approved, simply expired, and they are now resubmitting identical plans, we felt no issues with putting them both on and moving forward.
But as far as the difference between a preliminary and a final, is it fair to say that a preliminary gives the ability for commissioners to give comments on the plan before all the engineering is done and before the plan is finalized? Is there anything else that you would add that would typically be part of a preliminary that would not be part of a final?
Yeah, this is Mr. Skurdo talking. Yeah, the difference between the two is the preliminary, you look at lot sizes, street layout, street width, and real general broad-based items, you look at zoning and concepts. Where final, you start getting more into the landscape plan, and you start, and the engineers start looking a little bit more detail on drainage patterns and such.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Box, thank you, Mr. Skurdo. That was all the questions I had.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on the preliminary plan?
Just that all the procedures to Josh, I guess, as he mentioned that as long as the procedures are followed. So they were all followed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. At this time, I think I'd like to open it to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Ryan?
Yes, if anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand digitally. You can do that by pressing star nine on your phone or pressing the button in the Zoom application. I have Lionel, I had Lionel Bashore, go ahead. Lionel Bashore.
It's like he might still be muted on his end.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure out, I'm at 52284 Watkins Glen, and my property, I can see 24 Mile Road. I'm trying to figure out exactly where this development is. Where exactly is this proposed between Card and Romeo Plank?
Again, folks, if you're not talking, please mute your mics. Okay. Ryan, is there anyone else that would like to talk? Ryan?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted myself, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, nobody at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo, can you address Mr. Bashore's question?
This location, I believe, just west of the Harmony Acres subdivision.
Mr. Bashore, does that answer your question?
I have, let me allow him to talk again. Go ahead, Mr. Bashore.
Okay.
First of all, it's Bashore?
I'm sorry, Bashore.
Secondly, that does answer my question, but it seems as though that may butt up to the back of my property. And it does lead me to the question, if they had preliminary site plan approval, why did they let it lapse?
Okay. Do you have any other questions at this time, Mr. Bashore?
Did you hear the one I just asked?
I did. Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure we get all your questions out, and then we have our planner answer them all at once.
All right, I apologize.
That's okay.
So between the preliminary site plan and their final site plan, are there any changes to that plan?
Okay.
I guess those would be my two major questions.
Okay, thank you, sir, very much. And we'll move to Mr. Skurdo and Mr. Box.
Well, to answer his second question, there's not really any changes from the preliminary to the final, as you guys, as the commission can probably see from their packets. With regards to his first question about why it was lapsed, I guess I would defer that back to the petitioner himself.
Yes, Phil Ruggeri here. We had the preliminary approved. We had joined in a joint effort with properties to the west of us, of another subdivision. They were bringing the sewer line all the way down. We had to wait till all that was completed, and we had an extension. We had run out of time to have a second extension, and that's why we had to file a new preliminary. But it was a matter of lining up the sanitary sewer, which was eventually brought to the front of our property on 24 Mile, and we spent over $60,000 as our contribution to that overall pipeline that was brought across 24 Mile.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruggeri.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the public? Ryan, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public comments, and do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, there's no further discussion. I'd like to grant approval of the preliminary plan for Char Estates Site Condominiums, permanent parcel 0816100015, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, west of Card Road, Section 16, McComb 24 Development LLC, pursuant to the planning consultant's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Shudo made the motion, seconded by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Will do. Mr. Shuto.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Provazano. Mr. Provazano.
Yes, unmute your mic.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, motion passes. Final plan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome, Mr. Ruggeri. Final plan for Char Estates Site Condominiums, permanent parcel 0816100015, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, west of Card Road, Section 16, McComb 24 Development LLC petitioner. Mr. Box to Mr. Skurdo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Mr. Box again. So first, I would like to address the point that was brought up previously about the issue that was noticed this morning by Mr. Bentley. The packets you guys were sent had a plan set dated March 23rd of this year, and he noticed that in one of Mr. Skurdo's planning review letters, he is referencing a plan set that is more recent than that, which is correct. You should have received the more recent plan set, which you were sent this morning, once this error was discovered. We, as I indicated in the email, the only differences were notes and kind of housekeeping items on the plans. For example, the plan review document asked them to identify the school district, the height of some plants. They asked them to clarify that certain plants were, did not contain fruit-bearing, they were not fruit-bearing trees. And all of these items were addressed in the new revised plans, again, which should have been in your package to begin with, but were sent out this morning. There were no changes to the actual layout of the site whatsoever. It was just notes at the, you know, on the pages surrounding the site plan.
Mr. Excuse me?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Box.
I was going to see if Dave had anything he wanted to mention with regards to his plan review, the most recent one. I think the engineering had a few comments. Yeah, they're all detailed engineering things that would need to be addressed moving forward, but I think largely everyone is in approval of the final site plans.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Is the petitioner still in the audience?
Yes, again, Phil Ruggeri, 43231 Shaner, Sterling Heights, 48313, as the owner and petitioner in this matter.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Ruggeri?
Yeah, on the final site plan, as Mr. Skurdo indicated, we have met all the conditions required from all the various departments. All the engineering has been approved through AEW. It's all been signed off, and this is our last step before we set up a pre-con and start construction.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, I would just acknowledge, I would just acknowledge that I did receive that updated email.
Okay.
With the changes, I don't know if we have acknowledged that. I mean, I'm just, you know, we're doing this differently.
Right.
Why acknowledge I got the email, so.
Okay. Is there anyone that did not receive the email from Mr. Box? Okay, then everybody got that email this morning and had time, hopefully, to read it, and there's inform. All right, commissioners, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Provazano.
Mr. Chairman, this is.
Mr. Bentley.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Box for responding to the discrepancies and submitting the revised plan. It helped me understand some of the statements that were made in Mr. Skurdo's letter, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Any other questions from commissioners?
Chairman, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Just a question to Mr. Skurdo and Mr. Box. I haven't really reviewed the plan in full. I've glanced over it, but I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable. My initial look at the text was that it may not have enough dimensions to show the area, but I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the dimensions that they gave for the text on the sign.
Yes, we are. We've also sat down with the engineer, building department, fire department, and everybody's comfortable with the information we have received. They have added notes over a period of two iterations of plan reviews, and all the lots remain the same, y'all are in code. Streets, as of right now, based on the zone, our engineering will verify that through the more detailed approval process that follows up.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Skurdo, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, I just mentioned, thank you, Mr. Bentley, for catching the drawing. I appreciate his ability to spot these things. I don't know that I, well, it's not that I don't think I would have, I didn't when I looked over it on Sunday, so thanks for catching that.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I'd like to open it to the public. Ryan, is there anyone that would like to speak?
Nobody so far. If you guys would like to speak, just raise your hand digitally, and I'll call on you. Duh, I got one, I got somebody, here we go. French X, go ahead.
So the proposed entrance is only through.
French X, French X, would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Mark Brichette, 54322 Bryce Canyon Trail.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the only entrance to the sub technically that's proposed is through the main entrance to farms through Biscayne Trail there, to go into that main entrance?
Are those all your questions, Mr. Brichette, or is that your only question?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we'll turn it over to Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo.
So that there is an entrance.
Does that matter? What's that?
No.
There's an entrance off of 24 Mile, as well as entrances to streets, sub streets through Harmony Acres and Wellington Estates.
Okay. Mr. Brichette, does that answer your question? I guess it does. All right, at this time, we'll close the public, and do we have a motion on item B of tonight's agenda? Anyone?
Mr. Chair, based upon the record that was made, the discussion that we've had regarding the email today, and the planning consultant's recommendation, I would ask to make motion that we approve it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Provazano. I'll second it. Seconded by Mr. Shudo, thank you, sir. Mr. Bentley, please.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note, if I can, for the resident who was asking the question, just to make sure that he doesn't leave after that. I believe he referenced Biscayne Drive, which is adjacent to the next item on our agenda tonight. So I just want to make sure, before we go through this agenda, that he doesn't leave thinking that it's done. I believe he's here for the Pinzen, or however that's pronounced, property, which is the next one on our agenda. Just want to make sure that was noted.
Nice catch, Mr. Tuckfield, thank you. All right, Mr. Bentley, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Provazano.
Yes.
Mr. Shuto.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
All ayes.
Okay, motion.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ruggeri. Have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you.
Item C, preliminary plan, Penzin Estates Site Condominiums, permanent parcel 0808200009, located on the south side of 25 Mile Road, east of Garfield, Section 08, Roberto Vitale petitioner. Mr. Box or Mr. Skurdo?
Okay, we're here. We lost you for a second.
That's okay.
Yeah, this is Mr. Skurdo talking. I've got the packet reviews in front of us. In terms of the layout of the lots, lot sizes and such, everything is met. We do want to make a, it's not a clarification, it's an addition. Our review on page two, table two, where we have the width of the lots shown, the required width. Does everybody have that?
Yes.
I just want to point out, it says 70 foot for an interior lot, but there's another criteria that has been met, and that's any lots that are on a curved frontage, such as a cul-de-sac or an eyebrow, are allowed to be 55 feet in length, or in width, I'm sorry. And so I just want to point that out. It was a little confusing, as you read down to how this complies, but I just want to point out that all lots do meet the requirements. They've also, at this point in the game, again, we're looking at lot sizes in terms of preliminary, and we're looking at street issues, water issues, to make sure it can be served properly. I'm going to go through, and I'm just going to summarize some of the other reviews, if that's okay. It looks like the fire department, it looks like the fire department is fine as long as the International Fire Code 2012 Edition is adopted, and when they come in for more detailed engineering plans. The assessing department has no objections to preliminary plan in terms of dividing the property in the way it is. Engineers point out that the preliminary meeting regarding this plan in getting through with engineering for water mains, sanitary sewers, storm drainage roadways, landscaping and development bond must be held with the, between the petitioner, the engineering department, and the water department. The engineer has provided quite a few comments, but he did not here this evening discuss any of those. But again, most of these have to do with sizing of pipes and roads. Prelimarily, they feel it's met, but they will go through final calculations. That's follow-up on all the other departments.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Is the petitioner in the audience?
Gentlemen, my name is Bill Thompson from Lainer Associates, representing Roberto Vitale. My office address is 17001 19 Mile Road, Clinton Township, 48038. Just like to point out that this parcel is, in fact, leftover from the old Penzin Farms. This is where the farmhouse and the bar. This is where the farmhouse and the barns were. The younger Pennzine owned this property for some period of time after his dad, Joe Pennzine, passed away, and he sold it a couple of years ago to the Sir of Vitale. It's served by a sub-street coming off of Pennzine Farms, and that's its only access. We've got sewer and water, and we're all set to go. So, I'll be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Commissioners, questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Bentley.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
I had several, but maybe Mr. Thompson can help us. In the engineer's review, he talks about sanitary sewer being on the northeast corner of the property, and I could not find it. There is a 10-inch sanitary on the next, on the east side of the adjacent property, but I couldn't find it there. So, that was just a technical thing. I wanted to find out, too, if the landscaped area that is set aside for access to the detention pond, if that is fenced, or if it's paved, and there's two gates, but I don't see nor is it described any kind of a fence, or...
The access drive to the detention basin will be fenced.
Okay, along all sides, then, with gates on north and south?
Yes. And also, the sanitary sewer you're looking for is under a rock garden, it's somebody's front yard.
All right. I didn't see it on the either plan for the underground.
Well, there's supposed to be a stub extended to the property line. You pick it up off the stub.
All right. I didn't see that. That's fine. That'll be taken care of, I'm sure, during the detailed development. My other question was, the property to the east, in the area of the detention pond, is that property going to drain onto the detention pond? It appeared that everything flows that way, and wondered if that will be designed to accommodate.
We've made allowance as an elevation of the pond to accept the drainage from the east. It'll overflow, it'll flow over the surface and over the access drive into the pond.
All right. Very good. There's also a comment that there is landscaping or trees that are on the east property line, and it shows them in the original site plan. It doesn't... And I'm wondering, will those be retained or enhanced?
Along our east property line?
That's correct.
There's nothing planned to enhance it, but any trees on the adjacent property will be maintained, will be left alone.
Okay. These are on the reference property, the property, the Pennzine property.
Along which lot line? Which lots?
Oh, okay. It doesn't show them on the plans that show the lots, but it would be Lot 3 and Lot 2 on the east side. This is related to Mr. Skirdo's review on page three, under landscape and screening, and really under screening.
Well, there's no need to screen between residential lots.
Okay.
I think there's source or proposal in there that would mean we'd have to take down the trees.
All right. So, your plan is to take down the trees. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else? Any other Commissioners?
Yeah. Commissioner Oliver here.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
I got a question of Mr. Thompson. Why is it, why is it that we have this retention going east and west? Why couldn't we run it north and south and then run, and then connect up to 25 Mile Road versus going through another subdivision? What is the reason for that?
He asked me about going through another subdivision.
Well, okay, your retention pond is so large that you can't, you can't put a road through it, but if you had it north and south, then you could run a road up through it and connect right to 25 Mile Road. Was there a reason why you did it like that? I'd like to see this connect the rate to 25 Mile Road in that retention pond turn to the north.
We tried to minimize the approaches on 25. Road Commission rather not see a whole lot of driveways on the 25, a whole lot of public roads on the 25. It really, there's really not enough room there to fit a pond in, a road, and any other lots. The most efficient way to develop was a pond going east and west with two lots facing 25, and then lots facing Biscayne Drive.
Okay, there's... So, how far away would that eastern end? Let's just say you run a road right out to 25. What would be the distance roughly between the two exits and entrances on your new sub, on the Pennzine Estates sub?
I'm guessing about 500 feet. That's a guess.
And the Road Commission don't want that?
Well, you've got another entrance right across this, kind of kitty corner across the street.
You'd be directly, right? What I'm looking at, why couldn't you just come out, it'd be directly in front of this, directly in front of this development to the north?
The entrance to Wolverine, Wolverine, we want to keep at least 250, dead minimum, 250 feet away from that one. And I think we can't do that.
So, that's a requirement for...
Yeah.
They don't want, they want two entrances hitting dead on.
Correct.
They want offset, is what you're saying.
Correct.
All right. Okay. I get it now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else? Any other Commissioners?
Mr. Thompson, or Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Bentley again.
Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Just a clarification, then, Mr. Thompson. The frontage on the property along 25 Mile Road is approximately only 200 feet. Is that correct?
I don't know the exact number, but no, it's more like, yeah, 210, I think.
Yeah, 210 feet. So, that really minimizes...
Correct. If you put a lot, if you put a road out there with lots, the detention basin would be 30 foot wide and not deep enough to do anything.
Mr. Bentley, are you still there?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other Commissioners before I turn it over to the public? Anyone? All right. Ryan, do we have anyone that would like to speak from the public?
We do. First of all, we have William Smith. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's William Smith, 54297 Stillwater. I'm also the Vice President of Pennzine Farms HOA. I've got a couple of questions. Number one, would there be a construction entrance to this? Because this seems like it's going to cause a lot of congestion in our entrance, which is used by both us and Sumpter Forest uses our entrance also to get to their subdivision. And our entrance is a little, out of all the roads in our subdivision, that's probably the most worn. And number two, there's a fence that is shared along the south side of this property and the east side of this property, a wooden fence. Is there any plans by the developer to either remove or improve? Or what are they going to do for the residents that are kind of budding up to this property? That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, very much. Mr. Thompson?
The fence will be removed. And what was the first? I forget the first comment.
A construction entrance.
Oh, construction entrance will come off of 24 directly onto the site.
Okay. All right. Ryan, anyone else? Ryan?
Yes, we have Joseph, and excuse me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, Kosika. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, gentlemen. Yes, my name is Joe Kosika, 17761 Huron Drive in the Pennzine Farm sub, and I am also on the homeowners association and work with Bill to manage this homeowners association. And I guess to clarify what Bill was saying for Mr. Thompson is that, you know, we've been established for 20 years now, 253 homes, and I think from what I see the plan, that your development, your residents will come through our current entrance in the future. But also, to, you said that the construction entrance would be on 24? Did you mean 25 Mile Road? And if so, where on 25? You're not going to have construction coming through our subdivision, correct?
I'm sorry, I did mean 25.
25, so you're going to have a dedicated construction entrance, not coming through our subdivision?
Construction traffic for the building of the subdivision will come off 25 Mile Road. When it comes time to do the individual houses, it will probably come through the sub.
So, here's the problem, though. So, this sub, 253 residents, 20 years old, also takes in Sumpter Forest residents, and now we're going to add another third subdivision into one entrance, and that is not going to work out, in my opinion, unless we see some better plans. So, ingress and egress could be a problem for three subs into one entrance way. That's concrete broken right now. Also, so that's one, and then, of course, the fencing on the east and the south side. Over the years, those trees that were on Pennzine's property had grown into the Pennzine residents and buckled that fence and have gone over the side. So, what I heard was that you were going to be removing the fence and the trees. What would you replace the fence with? It's actually for the backyards for the Pennzine Farms residents. For Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, are you there still?
Muted.
Yeah, he is muted.
Okay.
What happened, Ryan? Oh, he's muted. Okay.
Yeah, he's muted.
Okay.
So, for the Commissioners, you see, we've got an issue with an existing subdivision that's 20 years old, that currently serves both Sumpter and Pennzine, and now we're going to add another one, and construction is going to be through the sub, is what he said. So, I mean, I think, and this is what I need to clear, okay, you get your facilities, you get your sewer, your pipe, your heavy equipment coming in straight off 25, across from Wolverine, next to Randazzo's. However, now, we're going to start bringing in cement trucks and, you know, all the wood, roofing, and all that stuff through our sub. That's not acceptable. So, I think construction entrance has to be off a 25 Mile Road dedicated to construction from start to finish, and not through our subdivision. So, I'll make that statement.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thompson, are you still there? Mr. Thompson? Mr. Box or Mr. Shudo, would you like to comment on our residents' comments?
We will take those into advisement when we sit down with Mr. Van Tippel, the engineer. I'm taking notes right now. I can't offer a comment or anything right now, other than we're going to take that seriously. We'll bring that up with the engineers when they're back in town, before anything proceeds further.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Thompson, are you there at all? Have you unmuted?
I am now.
Okay. Did you hear our resident?
Yes, I guess the fact is that Biscayne and Yettis Way are public roads, and they're available for access to the public. I don't know what can be done as far as satisfying their comments. We're looking at 12 units here, 12 houses. It'll be on that new road compared to the 250 some that are there now. And I think you do have two entrances. There's one farther down on 25 Mile Road. You can go from one subdivision to the other, so that's not the only entrance you have. Our plans will be designed to meet Road Commission requirements. The township engineer will be concerned, we will be concerned about all the development. If there's a way to minimize access through Biscayne Drive and your Boulevard entrance, we'll do everything we can to meet that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ryan, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, we have French X once again. Go ahead, sir.
Is there a way that you could... This is Mark Frichet, 54322 Bryce Canyon Trail.
Go ahead, Mr. Frichet.
You could actually turn the retention pond, eliminate one of the lots, and have that entrance go over there instead of, and it'd still be offset? Because it is, we have way too much traffic coming into our sub. I mean, there's, we have a lot of kids in the sub, and so many people coming through the sub, that you're going to add another 12, 13 houses to the sub entrance. It's a problem already in our... Our website is getting blasted all the time with all the kids, all the people rushing through here, coming through our other sub. I mean, it's a problem. There's no streetlights. You know, it is a definite problem. There's no way to eliminate maybe one of those lots that are on 25 to make a separate entrance to come down to turn that retention pond.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
There's so much traffic through that entrance. I mean, I feel sorry for the couple of people that are in those three or four houses that are right there. It's a lot of traffic, and all on Biscayne Drive right there. It's even on my, in my street, it comes, they come through, they go to Sumpter Forest, and then, you know, through our subs, there's a lot of traffic. And adding 13 more houses, it's just going to be unbelievable.
Thank you, Mr. Frichet. We appreciate that very much. All right. Is there anyone else for the public, Ryan, that would like to speak?
Yes, we have Destress. Go ahead. Destress? Destress? Okay, I guess we'll just move on.
Okay.
We also have Jack D. Giovanni, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name's Jack, 54839, I'm right out of McComb, Michigan. I'm the house right next to the street that's going to be leading into this new development. That is only going to be 12, 12 or 13 houses is what it is, no condominiums, correct?
Correct.
All right, wonderful. I guess I just want to go on the record saying that I'm going to lose my, kind of my private street here. I'm opposed to this, but obviously this is what happened to McComb. More people want to live here. So that's all I need to say.
Let me make a point, though. It's a site condominium, that's how it's titled. It's a little bit different than a plat, but it is individual, single-family homes, no multiple housing.
Yes, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ryan, anyone else?
We have Destress still has their hand up and Joseph Kosika still has their hand up, but I think Joseph already spoke.
Right.
So Destress, I'll go to him one more time.
Okay.
Destress, are you there? Okay. And now we have Andrea. Go ahead. Andrea?
Hi, good evening. It's actually Charles Shaw, spouse of Andrea.
Oh, okay.
Penzian residence. A couple of questions in regard to notice.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please take your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, it's Charles Shaw, 54802 Bryce Canyon Trail. And that's in the Penzian subdivision. A couple of questions. Notice appears to have just gone to the association and not to the individual homeowners. That was a concern, as I think a lot of the residents aren't aware that this is up for hearing tonight in front of the commission. Another point is in regard to moving forward, if this is approved, what is the developer doing as far as ongoing maintenance of the entrance and the road as far as a agreement with the subdivision on maintenance, repair, et cetera? I don't expect that they will be using our road and entrance and doing that wear and tear without compensation to the sub. I haven't seen anything in regard to that.
Okay, Charles, is that all you have as far as questions go tonight?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Thompson, would you like to address those?
Well, it's a public road. I don't know if the subdivision actually pays for maintenance on it.
Okay.
So I've never had that happen before.
All right, and Mr. Box, the notice to just the association is that common operating procedures?
I will check on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ryan, back to you, anyone else?
Yes, Robert Gabbit or Gabbe, excuse, excuse me if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, but you can go ahead. Robert?
Yes, my name is Rob Gabber. I live at 17994 Crystal River.
Go ahead, Robert.
On the last comment from the other gentleman, you say these are county roads. Well, road commission never comes in and does anything to our roads. We maintain our own roads in here. So with all that other traffic coming in here, I don't see that with all our kids in the subdivision, I don't see why we need to open Bryce Canyon to the new sub people.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Gabbit? And I'm sorry if I pronounced it wrong. Pardon me?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else, Ryan?
Yes, we have phone number ending in 2178. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Dan Stress that I've been trying to use the Zoom meeting. Sorry, guys. I, I mirror, oh, 17891 Salinas Riverway, Lot 9.
Thank you, Mr. Stress.
Yeah, I, I can see the, you know, where the entrance to the sub will be. And I will echo the sentiments of majority of the Penzian Farm homeowners that, you know, the traffic between school buses, Amazon, people, Sumter Forest, you name it, the traffic is ridiculous here. The wear and tear on the roads is very high. The concern for safety for the residents, we have tried in the past to get stop signs at certain intersections. For whatever reason, the town, the, the road commission wouldn't allow it. I, I, you know, this, this, somebody's got to take, take this on and take it to the road commission, especially this in and out with the open up Biscayne. There's no stop sign on a corner. You're going to have people rushing in and out. There's only one in and out. I don't know, are you widening Biscayne? I mean, or, you know, how, how wide is this going to be if that's your only in and out? People are parking on the street. There's no room. There's absolutely no room for these, for this traffic to go in and out. 12 houses, yeah, 12 additional cars, 12 additional friends', friends' cars, kids, you name it. It's getting ridiculous. And to open it up this way, you're asking for trouble. Somebody's going to get hurt, there's no doubt about it. So that's number one. And the same thing, I will echo with everybody else, the entrance way gets a ton of traffic. Again, multiple rounds of school buses, all the deliveries, all the people. And yeah, there's an entrance to Sumter, that's two. But guess what? People are going to do what they're going to do. It's easier to come through our sub, especially if Sumter's, their, their homes are on the west side of Sumter. They're going to come through us. We're now going to be a, a traffic hub. And it's, it's, something's got to be dealt with it. You know, dealt with either the signage in our, in our subdivision. You know, we, we need something and we need some, we need some help from all these developers. You know, you guys got the clout, you guys got the lawyers, okay? Take it to the McComb, the, the road commission, get it done. Meet with the, meet with us, you know, the boards here, the boards of Sumter, whoever. And, and let's get it done, okay? We need to have, address the safety of, of our residents. Signage for your new proposed subdivision, okay? Penzine Estates, where's your signs going to be? And are they going to be lit up? I, I face, I'll, I'll face that entrance. I do not want to see a landing strip outside my upstairs bedroom window. And again, everything else has been pretty much covered. The fence, and one thing about the retention basin, I hear about road to retention basin, is the retention basin itself going to be fenced in or just access to it? Because honestly, with all the kids we've got here in the subdivision, they run across the, the river, the, the retention basin across in Wolverine, people are going to access that, people are going to start, it's got to be secured. That's enough.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stress, very much. Ryan, is there anyone else? Ryan?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the portion to the public. And I'm going to bring this back to Mr. Thompson, Mr. Schudo and Mr. Box. So, Mr. Thompson, did you want to address any of the comments that were made tonight? Mr. Thompson, are you still there? Mr. Schudo or Mr. Box?
Yes, Mr. Schudo here. Like you say, a lot of these questions have to deal with some engineering, street alignment issues. We've taken note and we would like to have the opportunity to get back with Mr. Van Tiflin, the township engineer, to bring these to his attention and get a response.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson, is there any, do you have any final thoughts?
At this point, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners?
Chairman, Commissioner Tuckerfield?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckerfield.
Question to Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, on the, on the construction entrance, I know that's been, been brought up, obviously, and with the way the retention basin is, it would be difficult to have a construction entrance from 25 for the duration of the project with where that basin is in the middle. Do you think you have any flexibility or, and this maybe is, is maybe to Mr. Van Tiflin, but Mr. Box and Mr. Schudo might be able to help me out with this. Do you have any flexibility to do that more toward the end of the project to allow a construction entrance further into the development portion and perhaps alleviate some of the initial traffic on that, on that entrance off of 25 to Penzine?
That's something we'd have to work out with, with the engineering department because typically they would want the detention basin completed in its entirety before we could do anything as far as issuing building permits.
Okay, that would, that would make sense, at least to a certain extent. I would just say, Mr. Box, Mr. Schudo, I, I don't know if Jim, if that's something, I, I don't know all the reasoning to that, but I would think that that might be something that, that should be at least considered. I don't know all the, the other portions to it. We, we talk about construction entrances a lot. And, you know, you guys both are relatively new here, but it's something particularly in the last couple of years, we've, we've paid a lot of attention to. And it seems like maybe this might alleviate some of the concern. I certainly recognize the, the concerns of the residents. I also recognize what Mr. Thompson is referring to. These are, are public roads and, you know, the subdivision, it's, it's clear from driving, it's clear from the, the aerial that it was designed with this stub street meant to go there. And then on the secondary portion, we have the, the comment that the road commission does not want to see a stub street coming up 25 so close to the Wolverine, the Wolverine sub entrance there. So the, the developer does have a right to build if, if he's on a lot that, that meets all the requirements. And it is a public street. All that said, if there's things we can do to mitigate it, I, I think that they should be explored. And it seems like maybe, you know, doing something with the construction entrance, it's not going to change the, the pedestrian traffic. But it seems like more often than not, we get the most concern out of construction traffic. Once there's residents in there, it tends to slow down, tends to quiet down. But nobody likes cement trucks running in front of their house, particularly in established neighborhood where you're worried about the roads. So I just pass that along. I don't know if there's much we can do about it at this end, but hopefully that's something that you guys can perhaps work something out. The only other, the only other question I would have, and, and this is more just understanding it, I, I recognize that Mr. Van Tiflin and you, Mr. Thompson, will probably talk about this, but I'm curious what the reasoning is about putting the retention basin in the middle of the property as opposed to the south end closer to the, the back of the property? Is that due to the, to the pitch of the property? What, what drives that, what drives that positioning?
You know, the stormwater outlet is a 25 Mile Road ditch.
So you have to keep it in some proximity to it.
Also, Mr. Vitale is, is a well-known developer in the area and he will do everything he can to mitigate any, any problems that this thing could develop. Because he's going to build his own houses. He's, I don't think he's selling the lots off at all. So it'll be Roberto Vitale developing the subdivision and building the houses.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Mr. Thompson, thank you, Mr. Chairman, those are all my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckerfield. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Commissioners? Mr. Thompson? I have a quick question for Mr. Thompson. Did you actually speak with the road commission about having an entrance on 25 Mile? Or is that just common knowledge that they don't want all these extra entrances?
It's common knowledge, but we also talked to them a lot. We will, we will address it again.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Box, I saw you up there, go ahead.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah. Mr. Thompson, were you actually denied? Or you just felt that the road commission would not allow that?
We weren't denied, but we had discussed it with them.
Okay. See, I got a hard time with a couple of things. Generally, when we put these stub streets in, we know this property is going to continue to grow with homes. And typically, as we put a stub street in, you get another development, another batch of homes, and generally you get another exit. Okay? When you start really looking at this, I can really understand some of the concerns with the residents. One of the concerns I got right now is from Mr. Stress. He brought up an interesting question. How are you going to identify Penzine Estates? Where are you going to actually put the sign?
It's proposed to be along 25 Mile Road. We have two lots of face on 25. It'll be someplace in that area.
So these are going to be private lots? You're going to put, put a sign on?
They'll be part of the sub.
But them, but them lots will have entrance and exit on 25 Mile Road, two lots, correct?
There'll be two, two individual lots, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, all right, so that's where, that's where the sign will be. But, but still, people are going to see that sign and still have to drive down to the, the next development to get in there.
Well, again, like I mentioned earlier, Roberto Vitale is going to be the builder. And he will be doing all the lots. He has models, I imagine one of the two lots on 25 will be a model. And he'll have models in other subdivisions and he will be selling these lots from those models. I don't think it's going to be necessary to have a, a big massive sign like the Penzine Estates and the Sumter Forest sign.
Okay, I've, I've got a question to, to Mr. Schudo and Mr. Box, but whether here, has Jim Van Tiflin weighed in on this? Because I think there's a lot of answers that he needs to know, too, on this issue, on this whole project.
So Mr. Van Tiflin did provide a review and, and he did outline some, some issues that would need to be addressed, you know, drainage and sanitary sewer, things of that nature. As far as the roadway, he didn't really make any mention of entrances to the subdivision off of 25 Mile, but I think that's a valid point. And I think that's something that we should discuss with him further before moving forward with, with too much more of this. And, and so, I guess that being said, I, I would not be opposed to, you know, if you commission members were interested in, in, you know, tabling this or slowing this down for the time being until we can get Jim home from vacation and, and discuss some of this with him, as well as clarifying some of these issues with the road commission to find out if that's even feasible to get a road out there or not, if it would truly be denied or if it's just assumed that it would be denied.
Are you good, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, I'm good now.
Okay. You know what, I am, too. I mean, I still don't understand why there's not an entrance on 25 Mile. And before we go any further, I would like to thank all the residents that spoke tonight. It's really hard to do it when it's just audio, but you spoke very well tonight and you really did get your point across. Thank you so much for that. Do I have a motion to postpone the preliminary plan for Penzine Estates site condominium?
Mr. Chairman, I'm.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, I'll move to postpone until we get a little more information on this, maybe get a, a direct answer from the road commission. If they absolutely do not want that entrance, then, then we got an. not want that entrance, then, then we got an answer. But right now, we're just assuming they don't want that entrance, and I, I'm not so sure that's fair to the new residents and the old residents there. And there's also a safety issue with getting fire and rescue in there. So I'd move to table this or postpone it until Mr. Van Tiflin comes back, and a lot of these answered, questions get answered.
Okay, sir. You know, we'll call, we're gonna, we're gonna table it instead of postpone. We'll just table it. Do I have a second on Mr. Oliver's motion?
Chairman, I'll second. That's Commissioner Tuckfield.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. I, I agree with you, Mr. Oliver, and all the commissioners, and our residents. We still have a lot of answers to get, a lot of questions to get answers to. Mr. Bentley, please, call the roll.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Provizano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, let's move on to old business, everyone. Public comments on, public comments on non-agenda items. Let me remind anybody that wants to speak, you are limited to four minutes. Ryan, do we have anybody who would like to speak?
Yes, we have French X. Once again, I apologize, I forgot your name already, but you're, you're, go ahead. French, French X username.
And please remember, this is on non-agenda items.
This is Mark Frashad again from 54322 Bryce Canyon, Tran. And I believe we, I think, I think Penzine Farms owns a little strip of property up to 25 mile road. I guess we could look into seeing if someone would be willing to purchase that, to make that a separate entrance to give us that 250 foot access between Wolverine to come in, and then they could come into their new sub that way. That's another possibility.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Once again, this is not agenda items. Ryan, do you have anyone else that you'd like to, that would like to speak?
I do.
Okay.
Uh, well, I, I did. Joseph, there he is. Joseph Kosika, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, no. They were just the comments that I put into the chat, and I, I don't know if you read those or addressed those, or just, they were just more questions. So if we're done with this topic, which I think we are, then I am finished. There is more questions, but, you know, we'll move on. Thank you.
We'll make sure we look at those comments.
Yeah, oh, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Have a good night.
You too.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure I go through and copy those. I just pulled them up. I hadn't, I, I'd seen them, but I hadn't gone through and read, read them, but I'll copy them for the commission.
Okay, thank you so much, Aaron. Anyone else, Ryan?
No, sir.
Okay, then we're going to head, close the public comment portion of our meeting tonight. Commissioners' comments. Anyone? Nobody? All right. You know, I would just, again, like to thank the residents for coming out and sharing their concerns. That's what we're here for, to serve the public. Township Board of Trustees' update from Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Hardy and Board, there is no update, because we got ahead of McCombs Township BOT meeting. So there really is no update today. So, sorry.
Oh, don't apologize. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have actually had our first meeting of the year with ZBA. It happened last Thursday, just as we were going into 4th of July. Had a couple of items, we went through them, and we also did election of officers. So we are set for another six months, because we're gonna have to have another one in January. There is one item that I wanted to bring up. I think we've talked about this before, but we're, we're seeing, we saw a ZBA variance request on this at our last meeting, and I believe, Mr. Box can correct me, but I believe we have three more coming up at our next meeting in August. And this specifically regards pool setback from the house. We've dealt with this at ZBA a lot, and just broadly speaking, one of the things that I was always taught as I learned about ZBA, and I've had a lot of people say, is when you get variance requests a lot on one issue, it doesn't mean that you should change the ordinance, but it means that you should look at it. And we've looked at this bef, before. I'm not sure that we came to a decision other than just conversation, but I know in, in talking with Mr. Box, it, it might be something that we want to address again. And specifically what happens is, we have a, a portion, portion of our ordinance that requires that pools be set back from the house at least 10 feet. Now, a couple of things. The first one is that when I've dug into this personally, there seems to be a variety of potential reasons for this. I've, I've heard different reasons from different people at different times, enough that one concern for me is that there may not be an actual reason, but everybody has a different reason, and that's generally not a, a great base for an ordinance. But the reasons have varied from a concern about structural integrity of a basement, you want to keep a pool away from the basement, concerns about coming out of a door wall in the rear of a house and falling into a pool, and then also concern for individuals using roofs as a convenient diving board for a pool that's too close to the house and causing themselves injury. We have talked about this before. There's probably not considerable concern about structural integrity, and, and while it's always potential that someone could do something dumb off of a roof, I don't know that I necessarily find that a compelling reason to restrict a pool, seeing as there's a lot of dumb things that could be done off of a roof, and we don't usually restrict other structures because of it. The last issue is, is with regards to a pool in proximity to a door wall, which would make sense, and is generally where our variances are based off of is depending on if, if the pool is in proximity to the door wall, if they're less likely to get a variance, where if it's, where if it's away from the door, door wall, they're, they're more likely to get a variance. But I think that this is something that, that I, I hope to see addressed sometime in the next few months. We're going through a period of time in our township where there's a lot of people building pools as they're, as they're deckering out their landscaping. I think this year probably has a lot of people looking at their yards, perhaps even more than they have done so in the past. And the nature of our parcels, I don't say this in criticism of our builders, but the, the reality is that typically our building envelopes are pretty filled up, and there is relatively small amounts of, of area in the, in the rear yard for a pool. So it, it becomes an issue quite often, and I think it needs to be considered. Maybe we decide to leave it pat, but we, we firm up the reasoning and maybe give some administrative guidance. But I, I think at the rate that it's coming in front of the ZBA, ZBA should be for unusual circumstances. Once it's something that happens regularly, I think it's better if, if, if the planning commission and, and then the board make more of a decision of how to handle it, so that, that an ad, it's not being decided on an ad hoc basis, it's being decided more as a, a matter of policy. So something I'd like to see come up hopefully shortly. Obviously, Mr. Box and Mr. Skurdo have a long list of items to work through. We talked about this briefly before the ZBA meeting the other night, but I just wanted to make sure that I, I put it on everyone's radar. As it's something we've seen in the past, we've talked about, but we're, we're seeing it again. We believe we will see it more and think it's something that we need to, we need to address. So that was the only, that was the only comment that I wanted to make with regards to that. We do expect to have another meeting in August, and we're, we're moving along. I'm glad that the planning commission, I'm glad Mr. Hardy somewhat selfishly was the, was the guinea pig of our two boards. He started out doing the chair job, and I learned a lot listening to him. I appreciate him, you know, doing it and letting me observe so that I had an easier time doing the, doing the ZBA meetings. So, not that I want you to be the guinea pig, Mr. Hardy, but I sure appreciate you doing a good job and setting a good example. So those are all my comments with regards to ZBA, and yeah, it's all ahead.
Get off mute here. Well, Aaron, thank you very much for the nice compliment. Planning Department, do you guys have anything, Mr. Skurdo or Mr. Box?
Yes, this is Mr. Box. So just to touch on something Mr. Tuckfield mentioned, we did have our first ZBA meeting last week, first one of the year, actually. And he is correct that we do have one scheduled for August. There are actually four items, not three, on the August agenda, and they are all pools. Not all the same setback due that he mentioned, but they are all for dealing with pools. So certainly, it seems as if folks are interested in pools. And also, as he mentioned, you know, it is something, that 10-foot distance that, that keeps getting brought up for variances, something that we are gonna look into, as well as a few other items that, that keep coming up that we're gonna start to look into. That being said, we also have the master plan update going on. We need to start moving forward on the sign ordinance as well, and, as well as several other ordinances. We've kind of developed a list of things that we're gonna look at within our current ordinances that could use some, some major overhauls, and not to put more stuff on my own plate, but it came up in the past day and a half that some of our fee schedules that, that we have for applications for developers, it appears have not been updated in almost 20 years. So they may still be accurate, but I think it's prime time to reinvestigate that. And, and I actually started reaching out today to some of our neighboring communities just to get an idea of where they are with some of their fees. So that's another thing we'll be looking at in the near future. And then lastly, I'll, I'll leave you on a positive note. It is, I guess, Christmas in July for you. Your computers are in, and I will be delivering them in, in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, before we have that motion?
Okay.
I would like to extend at least an offer anyway, that if, if I can be of any assistance in reviewing or, or making suggestions, whether it be this, the pool ordinance or anything else, please contact me. I'm retired and I have the time. So I'd be more than happy to at least give, or offer any suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
I appreciate, appreciate that offer. We'll, we'll definitely take you out on that.
Okay. Looking for a motion for adjournment. So moves. Thank you, Mr. Shudo? Second? Anybody?
Supported by Tuckfield.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Chairman Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provizano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
You got it.
Thank you again, everyone. Motion passes. Great meeting. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Thanks.